All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 12th meeting. Calling this to order, and I'll have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trin.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshino Farrell.
Here.
All are present. Back to Mayor Clark.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Gupta, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, do you mind reading our land acknowledgement, please?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples, who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land, who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. All right, council, for approval of the agenda, it seems that we do not need the last executive session. Can't find what number that is. Somewhere towards the end, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, there it is, at 7:45? Yeah. All right, so for the agenda, I move to approve the agenda minus the second executive session at 7:45.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so first up, we have our one and only executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.110-1G and RCW 42.30.140, Section 4. It looks like we are going to do 30 minutes to start. Let's just do, oh, this is an hour. But I think, I think we can start at like, I think the agenda says 30 minutes.
I'm not sure how aspirational that is, Mayor.
Yeah, not either. Let's do back at 6:20. All right, thank you. All right, welcome back, everybody. We are now on to public comment. We will start in the room with Sarah.
I haven't done this before.
Oh, yeah, no, you're good. So the, hopefully, the microphone is on, and then you'll have three minutes. There might be a green light if it's on, or there's a...
I see a green light.
Perfect, yeah.
So my light.
And you can just state your name and your city that you reside in, and then you have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Cheng. I reside in Samamish, and I'm a board member of the Samamish Botanical Garden Society, which we'll refer to as the SBGS. So yesterday, we sent an email to all the council members, and I'd like to take this time to summarize that letter. It's come to our attention that an opportunity might exist for expanding the activities of the SBGS with the newly acquired 15-acre parcel known as the Parker Property. The mission of the SBGS, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) established in 2018, is to work in partnership with the City of Samamish to create a park in our community dedicated to horticultural education. We have viewed the city webpage for the Parker Property, which is as yet without a master plan. The SBGS believes that we are able to honor and execute your stated vision. We're proud of our accomplishments so far in the heritage garden of Big Rock Park Central. We've considered this our first step as a nonprofit horticultural organization. We now have gained valuable knowledge, experience in administration, garden database management, website and social media expertise, educational offerings, plant research, and newsletters to the community, and opportunities for volunteerism. We are a sustainable organization with many partnerships and connections within the community that have been listed in your email. We're a growing nonprofit with membership approaching 150 and a newsletter readership of over 400 community members. We are ready, willing, and able to take the next step on a large parcel of land. Why are we willing to take on this challenging task of helping to develop the Parker Property? There are a number of reasons, some of which I'll again state here. Number one, public gardens are a way to improve mental and physical health. Number two, volunteer opportunities are a good way to solve our increasing isolation problems. Three, we prefer to participate locally rather than drive to other farther-away public gardens, such as the BBG, Bellevue Botanical Garden. And for the city, this is an opportunity for tapping into the value of contributions of time and knowledge from its citizens for free. And importantly, we personally gain satisfaction in giving back to the community in which we live. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a few other things, but I'll just leave it there, and thank you very much. We are ready.
All right, thank you so much. Justin?
Hello, my name is Justin Stiles. I reside in Samamish. I am the Eastlake Little League president. I also reside on the board of the Eastlake Youth Football. I'm here to ask the city council to consider giving youth sports, who has the majority of their participants that will be attending Inglewood Middle School and Eastlake High School, discounted rates on the turf fields and priority scheduling. We want, like anyone else, to have accessibility for fields for all of our youth sports. The proposed rental fees for Inglewood Middle School turf fields will make it so children who will attend Inglewood Middle School won't have the ability to even use the field for Little League. Eastlake Little League had 28 baseball teams, 14 softball teams last season, and for the past 30 years, we've been using Inglewood Middle School baseball fields, both of them, free seven days a week from March into July. And prior to the City of Samamish handling the Lake Washington School District reservations, Inglewood would require 65% of the participants were in the Lake Washington School District boundary, and they would require proof. We also maintained those fields and made repairs and capital improvements through 100% volunteer effort. And through those volunteer efforts, those fields were made playable and safe for their entire community, not just for our league. The proposed fees, which matches the Eastlake Community Field of $65 per hour, would add over $100,000 to our annual budget. Currently, our 2024 budget is set at $164,000. It's requiring us to potentially raise our fees for the average participant by $200 each. Nobody should have to pay $700 for their child to play Little League baseball, and that would make our league more exclusive and prevent underprivileged families from playing. We only have two other fields available to us that are suitable for kid pitch, and one other field for coach pitch. That's 28 teams and three fields, and we don't have any other options. For reference, the community fields at Skyline is $40 an hour, and Beaver Lake and Pine Lake Middle Schools are $30 an hour. That's less than half of what Samamish was charging for the Eastlake Community Field and the proposed charges for Inglewood. During the design phases on the turfing project at Inglewood, I was asked for input on some of those designs. However, I'm actually 100,000% against turfing of Inglewood after being blindsided by the proposed rental fees. Also note that I declined to sign the letter in support of the fields because of, for the county grants, because it's making it less accessible. I asked the council to consider providing priority scheduling and discounted rental fees at skilled district properties to youth sports programs that have a majority of participants attending these schools whose families tax dollar support, not just for Eastlake Little League, also for football, also for lacrosse. This will ensure that children that will attend these schools get to enjoy their field playing, community recreational nonprofit sports, and not get bumped due to the cost
Thank you.
of some select travel teams from Bellevue and Izquah, who can afford it.
Thank you.
Please save Eastlake Little League. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that didn't get an opportunity to sign up? They'd like, it was... Yeah, for Anjali, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Howe. We will take a look at that and get back to council about that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to online comments. I believe we had two that signed up before the 5:00 p.m. deadline today.
Okay, I will unmute the first caller. Mr. Stickney, you're unmuted.
Hello, City Council, Paul Stickney, Samamish. On Thursday, I went to the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan. I'm on that group. That was from 5:30 until 7:00. It had two parts. I'm involved with the entire basin, and there's another group that's involved with Pine Lake. Pretty exciting group. The level of experience from staff and consultants and participants from the city, it was our second meeting besides an open house, really good. Just a couple of interesting snippets that I learned. The flows that have been happening the last five to 10 years in streams in the Samamish basins tend to be flashier, shorter duration, more water, but not quite as much water all year. Another interesting thing was a discussion of the 1998 stormwater standards, and the consultants being pretty clear that, you know, development pre-98 wasn't even close in the level of stormwater management as post-98, and then, of course, the 2016 regs are a couple steps above that. It was also interesting to hear the fisheries folks talk about the different species that use the creek, and that Pine Lake Creek is one of four historic kokanee salmon streams in Samamish. And one of the most interesting things to me was in the second smaller creek in the Pine Lake basin, Canaan Creek. The consultants talked about cold-water oxygenated seeps, and they found pools, kind of like mini aquariums on the ground, where they saw kokanee fry swimming, and they surmise that if they survive there, then each year when the flow gets, you know, perennial, they'll go out to the lake. Interesting stuff. Well, then, the second part of my short story is, the string is now broken. I got out of that meeting at 7:00, went into the planning commission meeting next door, expecting them to be fully engaged in talking about parks. I didn't have a non-agenda comment for them, but I had an agenda one. I walked into the room at, it was 7:00, and I felt like I was in a, you know, Twilight Zone episode. No one was at the dius. There were a few people left. They got in and out of that meeting in less than half an hour, so a couple of the commissioners came up and teased me, said, "Your public comment string is now broken." Anyway, that's the updates. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll allow the second preregistered public commenter to give their comment. Ms. Victor, you're unmuted.
Hi, this is Mary Victor, Samamish for 23 years. I just wanted... Hi, again, this is Mary Victor, Samamish, 23 years. Trying, hope that you can hear me. I just want to make brief public comments tonight. I did send in public comments at the public hearing that started on the dockets. I hope that you will approve both of those with the changes that you could allow, separate plans or city centers. That doesn't need to be decided now, and there's a lot of acreage in the first one. I think what the city, excuse me, the Lake Washington School District doing is super important, so I did send those in. I hope you were able to read them, and we'll use them to think about what you discuss. And I hope that you'll accept them, because getting on the docket is just the first step, and that's where it needs to be. And if it can be put in the work plan, then it becomes real for maybe not 2024, but at least by 2025. The second thing I sent in was on the pros plan. It's kind of, maybe it's with the pros plan, maybe not. I think it belongs mostly in parks, because they've done connectivity before. I think it's very important to realize there's not a lot of connectivity in this city. We have a lot of dead ankle de-sacks. We have gaps where sidewalks aren't, or there aren't trails or ways that you can't go through, so you either have to drive around or walk much farther distances. So I think connectivity is very important. And as I was reading the packet after I had emailed my second comment on connectivity is, if you're doing anything with emergencies, you want to have as many wayouts as you can. Like, if you live on a road, or a dead-end road, or a cul-de-sac, say that your main link goes out, say there's a power pole down across it or something, you can't get out, you want to have ways that you can walk or save, that you can get through. So I think connectivity is a big issue. It shouldn't be a thing on its own, because it would take time to study. I think it should be part of every single project that we do, all the way from the big projects, all the way down to little projects, and I even mention things that the public work staff does. I think sometimes the issues that people bring up on my Samamish receive, like fix, I think could really be fixed with a very small project effort that could, I believe, be done by Public Works when they have the time and staff and the season to do it. So I'd like to see some of those things. And the last thing I wanted to tie it to is I see that you also have emergency management updates. If we really have an emergency, like a big emergency, like that big earthquake that everybody says we're due for, or if we have flooding, or if something happens, we really need to be able to get connectivity out, and we've pre-thought those out, done things like the dockets, and purchased land, and put in trails and connectivity. And there's also about, I think it's over 500 stormwater ponds now. Those are all owned by the city after two years, when there's a development. And old developments, they own them too, because they were handed over from King County. If those can be connected together so people can walk, or you can put native plants, or wildlife can go through, you'll get a lot of green space connectivity, places for wildlife, places for trees that are safe that people can go through. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks for letting me speak, and I hope you have a great meeting.
Thank you.
That's all for public comments.
Great, thank you so much. So I made a mistake, not surprising. So Councilmember O'Farrell, after our executive session, we would like to take action. If you would like to read that motion?
You bet. Based on positive 2023 city manager performance evaluation and to maintain internal pay equity, I move that Samamish City Manager's 2024 salary adjustment shall be equal to the final 2024 wage adjustment for all non-representative city employees, and shall be paid retroactively to January 1, 2024.
I will second that. So, council, would anyone like to discuss or make any comments about our city manager's review? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So I think the city manager has a very hard job. I think he did an outstanding job this past year. I think it's a very challenging position, because you have to be responsive to council, you have to be responsive to the residents, you have to be up to date on policy. It's a very challenging job. I had read that the average city manager's tenure is six years. I'm hoping that our city manager sticks around longer than six years.
Councilmember Howe?
I would echo that. He's been a pleasure to work with. In addition to that, I guess the thing I would mention is that he takes responsibility really well and takes feedback really well. So as a council member, I appreciate the fact that I feel I can be direct, open, and honest, and not mince words about something that might be going on, and that you carefully consider what I say, and then give me a response. And I know that that's how you treat the residents as well, which I also appreciate. And I look forward to 20, 30 years with you.
Yeah, we'll all still be here by then, for sure. Yeah, Scott, the same. Really appreciate your work, kind of steadying this ship or whatever we're on, I'm not really sure. But I really appreciate your leadership and kind of the foundation setting. I think we're all really headed in a great direction as a city, and really excited for next year. So I'm not seeing any other hands raised. All those in favor of the recommended motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you so much, Scott. And then, our legislative delegation is supposed to sign on around 7:00, so I move that we skip to consent calendar and following items until 7:00. So I'm basically moving to...
Second.
Yeah, thank you. So essentially, moving through the agenda until the, what was that?
Sorry, Mayor, please proceed.
Oh, yeah. Essentially, that was to move through the agenda until around 7:00, until we have our delegation on. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. So next up, we have consent. I will offer a motion, if anyone would like to make a motion for that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Before we get to that point, I've asked Audrey to join us and just talk a little bit about what all the, there's a number of contracts on there like last week.
Perfect.
Just to give council and the public a little bit of a preview on what all those are and why. So if I could turn it over to Audrey Starci, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, city manager, and good evening, Mayor and the Premier and Council. So Public Works has eight of our consent calendar items this evening. Three of those items are on-call supporting contracts that really support the department to maintain ongoing work in our as-needed contracts. So one is with ESA, or Environmental Science Associates, and that helps us to provide wetline monitoring reports as well as, that are regularly scheduled, as well as on-call support services for incoming development review applications. Two other contracts, or separate contracts, with Blue Line, now operating as Atwell. One provides engineering consulting support primarily for our pavement management program. And the other contract with Blue Line provides construction management services also for our pavement management program. The next contract, sorry. Another contract that we have, all the others are simply time extensions. There's a handful that do require funding increases, but most of the other contracts on the consent calendar this evening are extending design contracts that are just to close out some projects. And then, in addition, Public Works has one supplemental agreement for our landscape maintenance for our slipmole contract, and happy to answer any questions about any of the eight items.
Great, thank you so much, Audrey. Does anyone have any questions for Audrey? All right, council, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Still moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you, Audrey. All right, so next up, we have a presentation, the liner in the room says, "For Friends of the Izquah Salmon Hattery," or fish. Awesome. Great. What about Mark? All right, council, so I move to move up discussion on the emergency management and comprehensive emergency management plan update, item 15 to now.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. So we'll pass it off to Scott and Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as Mark is getting promoted up here. As you all know, we've been working on the comprehensive emergency management plan and all things emergency management, and this is an opportunity to update where we are. And I will turn it over to Mark to take it away. Oh. We are almost there.
All right, did my screen come on?
It did.
One second.
You're in notes view, Mark.
Oh, I apologize. What I'm not sure of is how to get out of that.
We can work with it.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Mark Baird, Administrative Services Director. I'm here this evening to provide an update on several emergency management projects. Specifically, I'll provide an update on the city's comprehensive emergency management...
Hey, Mark, can I pause you for a second? There's a "Give Subtitles a Try" overlaying the top of your slide.
Oh, I apologize, I don't see it on my side here.
I think you can even exit presentation mode and then just kind of go down the slides, that might work.
Just like this?
Yeah, perfect.
I appreciate it, thank you. Specifically, I'll talk about the CEMP. I'll provide some details, an update to our continuity plan, talk about plans for the 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant, and touch on some upcoming emergency management assistance and assessment. So I'll begin with our comprehensive emergency management plan. The CEMP is a detailed plan that's used to clarify emergency management roles before, during, and after an event. It assists in making operational decisions for a timely and effective delivery of emergency services to reduce the impact of an emergency on the community. Our current plan was implemented in 2017. Plans are updated every five years, and 2023 is an update year for the City of Samamish. The plan includes a base plan or document and a series of emergency support functions documents that touch on a variety of specific topics, from communications to public safety to resources and infrastructure. Our update process began in February of this year, and the first few months were about reviewing our current document with the city's work group. This work group was put together by individuals from each department in the city, as well as police, eastside fire and rescue, and the city manager's office. The next several months were spent updating the documents with an eye towards several new state requirements, and also included a second work group review of the product. This fall, we worked with resources from the state and had our plan informally reviewed by the unit that formally reviews these plans several times, received some feedback, and were able to incorporate that feedback in our final product. The work group had another opportunity to review the plan, and we intend to submit it for final state review in a week or so. Once accepted, the plan and its state acceptance letter will come back to council, and then it will be available and take the place of the existing one on the city's website and be used for training and exercise purposes. Shifting now to the continuity plan. The city's continuity plan ensures that the city can continue to operate its mission functions during an emergency. Our previous plan was put together in 2017, and in several aspects was a bit out of date. The structure of the city was a little bit different, and at the time, of course, it didn't contemplate having a union. Departments reviewed their respective areas of the plan, and we also had another element of the state review our draft. We incorporated their input, and the update has been signed and is available on the city's website. Next, I'll touch on the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Next, I'll touch on the Emergency Management Performance Grant. The EMPG is a federal grant that is passed through the state to assist in building and sustaining capacities in prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. In years past, we've used this grant for things such as the evacuation study that we most recently got. For 2023, we propose using this grant for consultant services to take a look at our sheltering capacity and abilities in Semamish. The grant requires a match, and those funds would be used to operationalize the recommendations that come from this assessment. And we most recently worked with the state a couple of weeks ago to finalize our application, and we should hear soon on our application. Lastly, I'm going to share a few details about an emergency management assessment and some consultant services help. We're working to secure a consultant to take a look at our emergency management capacity and assess where we are in terms of items such as EOC needs, training, assisting with updating the evacuation plan to incorporate elements from the evacuation study, other preparedness and readiness issues, as well as training and exercise needs. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the particular details of any of these.
Great, thank you, Mark. Councilmember Howe?
Hi, Mark, thank you for this update, it's helpful. So if we get this update in September for a second review, does that mean that council has the opportunity to review, make any suggestions? Or is this such a formulaic template that you simply, you know, fill in the box?
It's very much templated. There's a series of spreadsheet tabs that come from the state that list the requirements, the nice-to-haves and the like-to-haves. And so most of it is pretty much in form. And in working with the state, what they shared with us are that most jurisdictions bring it back to their council after they receive the letter of acceptance from the state. And that was the model that we were working off of. So when we receive the letter, we'll get a scorecard that will score out each of the areas, both in the requirements and in the optional fields. And I will be able to bring that back and share that with council at that time, and then have council adopt the plan.
Thank you. And are we thinking about going back to Eastside Fire and Rescue and asking for a rebate?
I can take that one, Councilmember Howe. I think we are continuing to work on the partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue and finding ways to continue to build and grow our relationship around emergency management, and how to really provide better service moving forward.
Well, if we have to pay for a consultant, that seems like an extra expense, or am I mistaken?
Councilmember Howe, I appreciate what you're saying, and that is an extra expense. I do understand that when an agency loses a resource and they don't have that capacity in-house, I think, you know, we had a vested interest in wanting to move forward. If council would like me to pursue that, that's something I can talk to the chief about.
Yes, I would be interested in that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks, Mark, for this update. I'm excited to hear about all these activities. I guess one question is going forward, like the continuity plan, it looks like that was just posted last month, and I didn't know we did that, so I'm super excited. It would be great, especially because we have had a lot of discussion about the emergency management plans. If we could just let us know, because I think we're really eager and excited about this. And I wouldn't mind seeing a draft version, right, before it goes to the state, just so we can kind of see what's in it and start to get up to speed on it if there's... I mean, just to know, especially, at least especially those on the EFOR board. It sounds like you've gotten some feedback from EFOR, and we want to make sure you're getting everything you need from EFOR. So if that's a possibility, I would love to see that. Again, there's a lot of discussion out in the community about this as well, so we want to help support your activities and support all the work that you're doing. So appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thanks, Mark. I understand there's a difference between the CEMP and what council is asking for in terms of an evacuation plan. Can you give us an update on where we are on this plan, this evacuation plan?
Sure. We currently have an evacuation plan that's titled "An evacuation annex", and it goes as part of our overall comprehensive plan. I think as council has noted in times past, we have since had an evacuation study done, and our current evacuation annex does not reference the evacuation study. And part of the reason for bringing in a consultant resource to help us work through that is to make sure that we have a good set of professional emergency management set of eyes to taking those two documents and putting them together in a useful way so that the evacuation plan is informed by the evacuation study. I would expect that to begin to take place in the first part of next year.
So we would hopefully see something by the end of 2024, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is a plan that we likely would bring to council and do a bit of a presentation on.
Yeah, that would be great, to see exactly what would be in the plans. Thank you.
Alright, Council, is there any other questions or comments for Mark? Great, thank you, Mark, and thanks for getting this in before the end of the year. Really appreciate that. Yeah, it's definitely super important. I think what's nice about council is that, of course, we would not be directly responding to these incidents or events. I do think it's a great idea for us all to probably take a look. I don't know if it's easy to send us a link or an email or something so we can put it at the top of our inbox, just to take a look at those plans for some light reading this evening. But, yeah, I really appreciate the work and definitely looking forward to seeing what we can do, you know, with EFOR in the future. I'm not sure if they've put out for that position yet or kind of what that will look like. So definitely interested in that relationship and how we can kind of move forward together, and then hopefully test these plans. So thank you so much, Mark.
You bet, thank you.
Yeah. Alright. What about the legislative delegation? How are we doing on that?
Currently, we have no legislators ready, but we have Nick Federici, who is our lobbyist. We can promote him and maybe he can speak.
I mean, we also have David Pyle here.
We also have David.
Yeah.
We only have five minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can do it, yeah. Let's keep rolling, if that's okay with you, Nick. Sorry, you can see me, but you don't get to speak. Yeah. So we are going to move back to our public hearing that is continued on from our December 5th meeting. This is the setting the 2024 docket. And did we have any other commenters that signed up for this specifically? I know we had a shutdown public comment. Or if they signed up for the next one? No, okay. Alright, David, would you like to bring us to speed?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I have... Basically, I go right to the end. I was going to do a quick recap, you know, been through the process. We closed the docket application timeline in August. We received two applications. The... The Eastman proposal. Docket number one is the Eastman proposal to... And staff recommendation is to add the detailed area in the docket as a neighborhood center and to add a new land use goal for the creation of neighborhood centers. The second item is to amend the city's TDR program to allow for internal transfers in the town center. We, as you recall, opened the public hearing on December 5th. It was continued to today. The next step in the process would be, once the public hearing is closed and the council takes action, would be to set the docket. And then we would be working with the applicants to receive applications if they chose to pursue it further. And we would pursue the legislative agenda as part of that in 2024. So I don't know if there were any... Anyone else wanted to speak on that? I'll pass it back off to you, Mayor.
Alright, well, I will close the hearing, and then we can have any comments or questions from staff? Oh.
We wanted to check online if there was somebody that would like to speak for the public hearing.
Okay, so we don't have to do the sign up for this one? Okay. Sorry about that, go ahead.
If you would like to give a comment for the public hearing, please raise your hand. If calling over the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, we have no commenters for this public hearing.
Alright, thank you, and thank you, Lita. Alright, so we are closing this hearing. Council, do you have any questions or further comments? And I know we have... Oh, here they are, right there, the recommended motions. So if anyone would like to speak, ask questions, make a motion? Councilmember Stewart?
I will, unless anyone has questions, I will go ahead and make the motion. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
So there's just been sort of some confusion, I guess, between is this a neighborhood center or is this a subarea plan? And is it possible to not specify which one it is right now? Like, is it possible to, like, move forward with whatever, with what we're planning without actually specify until we know more information? Or do we know enough information?
So staff feel neighborhood centers are well enough defined in the profession to know that they are much smaller scale than a subarea. They are a type of subarea that is smaller in scale. Staff do not recommend moving forward with this openly as a potential subarea due to the heavy constraints of the property and due to the message that sends that there could be a much more intense development place on the property. That could be with the currently current property owner or successors that could sell the property, and that could lead to a misunderstanding down the line as to the scope and scale of what really this property can carry.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Stewart?
Okay, I move to approve the resolution as shown in Exhibit 4. Is that still correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
One second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Would you like to speak to that?
No, thank you for the work. I... Yeah, thanks.
Cool. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Alright, so by six, one. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you for fitting me in.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
You too. That's it for you, alrighty. Alright, headed back to Lita and seen... Oh, okay. Alright, Nick's there. Alright, we are going to go backwards to our legislative delegation and see who's on. Hello, Nick.
Good evening.
So, Mayor, Council, as you know, you already introduced Nick. Nick is one of our contracted lobbyists that's been working with our staff and the council's legislative subcommittee to come up with our legislative priorities this year. And tonight is the opportunity for council to share out with the members of the delegation that are able to join us about what our priorities are and to hear from those members about what they are going to be focused on. And Nick, maybe as a starting point, if you could give us a quick summary of what we're heading into this session overall?
Absolutely, thank you, council members, thank you, Scott. Nick, as we said, Nick Federici, I'm one of the contract lobbyists that consult with you. This legislative session, not a lot different, not a lot has changed from last year. The membership of the legislature has not changed. Democrats control both the House and the Senate, as well as the governor's mansion, but we are going into an election year where all that could change, of course. And we'll have a new governor in a year. That's another big thing, obviously. The... It's a short 60-day legislative session, which convenes on January 8th and gets out on my... on March 8th. And so the pace will be very... And therefore, it's timely that we're providing this information to our legislative delegation now, a month in advance, almost a month in advance of the legislature convening, so that we can work with them both between now and legislative session, as well as during legislative session and try to reach fruition on the requests from you as a city. So happy to answer questions about, you know, details. One of the things that we know will involve a lot of the legislature's time is a number of initiatives being filed to the legislature on a variety of both fiscal and policy topics. One that's already been filed, one that's filed today, another one's being filed on Thursday, and rumors of yet another one on Monday. And so that may take a lot of the legislature's time. Other than that, they'll be doing a supplemental budget, which fills in the gaps from the biennial budget that they enacted last year. And so far, have heard, have not heard a lot of ambitious intentions for the... I see the delegation member smiling at that. For the 60-day... It's still, but it's still early, exactly. Thank you, Representative Springer. So that's sort of the generic picture for the upcoming legislative session. Happy to answer questions about anything specific that folks are interested in. Nick?
I'm on verbally, this is Mark Mullet, I'm on verbally, I'm just in my car, so I've got my camera off.
I saw Senator Mullet down here in Tacoma earlier this afternoon. I understand he just gave a presentation as well, so he's like Roy Kent. He's here, he's there, he's everywhere, so...
Well, thank you so much, Nick. And if I may, Mayor, perhaps what we could do for those legislators that are on the call to do quick introductions, and then we could move into council sharing out what our legislative priorities are for this year. And then I think we'd like, love to hear from our delegation members about what they're focused on for this year as well, and how we might be able to partner on that, if that makes sense. So with that, and if it makes sense, Mayor, I'm going to start with what's on my screen, I think, for all of council. Senator Wellman, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm muting myself, yes, thank you. Senator Lisa Wellman, and I am Chair, for your information background, I'm Chair of the Early Learning K-12 Education Committee in the Senate. I also sit on energy, environment, and technology, where I have been very active, especially on broadband. And as you may know, there's over $1 billion that we're looking at coming in for the bead money from the federal government for rural broadband, which might in fact affect some of part of your city, as well as sitting on ways and means. And I'll... We can talk further about specifics as we go around, and I'll just pass it to the next person.
Thank you, Senator, Representative Springer, if you'd be so kind.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for having us again, good to see folks. The... I'm Representative Larry Springer, 45th District, which is East King County, has that portion of, has a portion of Semamish, not all of it, but portions of Redmond and Woodinville and Duval, Kirkland. I am the Deputy Majority Leader for the House Democratic Caucus and sit on the Finance Committee, which is the Tax Policy Committee, and on the Appropriations Committee. That's the committee that spends the money the Finance Committee raises. And my policy committee is Agriculture and Natural Resources. So I've spent a lot of time the last two or three years working on wildfire management, wildfire response, wildfire prevention, resilience. We are in the process of a 20-year commitment through a bill I passed in 2021 to improve forest health and help protect particularly those cities at risk. And surprisingly enough, Semamish rates higher than one might expect as a... in danger of wildfire effect. So it's now a Washington State problem, not just an eastern Washington State problem. So we'll be doing some more work there. So look forward to hearing your priorities tonight. I have to pull off at 8:00, I hope that... I have to pull off at eight, I hope that's not too soon, but.
Thank you, Representative. I'm sure we can accommodate that. Senator Dingra, you're next up on my screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's such a pleasure to be here. My name's Monica Dingra. I'm the state senator representing the 45th District, along with Representative Springer. I too am the Deputy Majority Leader of the Washington State Senate. I chair a long Justice Committee. I sit on healthcare, and I sit on ways and means. And just to give you a preview of some of my bills for next session, I will continue to do the work in behavioral health, specifically around the new 988, well, not so new anymore, 988 crisis line, and really making sure we're able to provide crisis services across the state. I do have a bill that I'll be dropping any day now around creating a crisis center for the youth in our community. I will continue doing my work around gender-based violence. I have a bill around sexual assault that is based on recommendations coming from the Sexual Assault Forensic Examinations Workgroup. And I also have a bill on trafficking. Unfortunately, we have lots of issues around sex trafficking for minors. So those are some of the big ones, but my priorities always are around making sure we are taking care of Washingtonians to make sure they have the best resources available so that they can be successful in life. And I am looking forward to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator. Senator Mullet from the car.
Hello, everybody. This is Mark. Yeah, I do the capital budget in the Senate. I'm on the Education Committee with Senator Wellman, and I'm also on the Economic Development Business Committee as well. And I look forward to hearing what you guys' priorities are, and I'm really on the call to kind of get your guys' input as we have a conference session. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator, and from the 5th Legislative District, as I recall. I also see on the call Yuval from Representative Sen's office.
Yes, hello. Hi, everyone. I'm Yuval Berensin, here on behalf of Representative Sen, honored to sit with all of you. Representative Sen, for those of you who don't know, is the Chair of the Human Services Youth and Early Learning Committee in the House of Representatives. And this session, as usual, one of her biggest priorities is childcare and helping families all across her district and all across the state. And I'm honored to be here on her behalf and excited to hear about your priorities.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you all for joining us this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor to go through our legislative priorities with Counsel.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here, too. It's really nice to see your faces. I know a few of us are definitely looking forward to coming to visit you next session. So our staff is really great here, and they have tasked us to split this up nicely, so we can each kind of give a portion of our priorities. So I'm going to start with Senator Mullet. I think you're the only one here from the 5th currently. So this is the funding for the Endeavor Elementary School. So this is a Safe Routes to School and Flood Reduction Project. The cost estimate is 7.1 million. We are requesting 1 million. This will help, like I said, safe routes to school by installing bike lanes, sidewalks, crosswalks. And this road is periodically closed and very susceptible to flooding, so this project will help elevate it by three feet, really, to eliminate that. And this is in the Isawawa School District. And then I will pass it to Counselmember Trine to finish up that piece.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're pretty excited about this, as far as a project that needs to happen immediately. And so we're moving forward on it, and we just asked that you guys would consider that, the request of 1 million dollars, and that you'd grant that to us. It'd go a long way to help our students, and also the fire and rescue response times will definitely be impacted on seasonal flooding. So we need to, we need to get this project rolling right away. Thank you.
Okay, that's good. I mean, I, my kids went to Endeavor, because even though I lived near this violence, there is a period where they ship kindergartners to that school, so I'm very familiar with the spot you're talking about. And I would have to, I mean, Nick, I guess, send over the specifics, so I'm trying to figure out if it's a transportation request or a capital budget request, and so let's just stay connected on that and move forward from there.
If I may, I think that, given the complexity and the, and the nature of the flooding and so forth, that it could come from either transportation or capital or both, to solve the various sort of interdisciplinary, if you will, problems that are resulting in that situation.
And this is Luke Esser, the other contract lobbyist for the city, and I just want to make clear that the City of Sammamish would not be too proud to accept money from either the capital or transportation, whatever our delegation would consider the best source.
And I think the capital seems to be, transportation budget seems to be in the worst spot going into session of the three budgets, so. So let's, yeah, any way you can write the request to focus on what would be non-transportation pieces of that puzzle, I think the better odds it would have. So I think it would be helpful to kind of scrub the full $7 million to figure out what portions are clearly not transportation-related or would be more capital budget flood mitigation-related, and that'll be helpful, I think.
Senator Mullet, the one point I would make is that there was a large non-motorized component to this, to this project as well. So I think there might be a nexus to the Climate Commitment Act dollars. So we definitely do want to cast a wide net and be as creative as we can as we approach you and be problem solvers to the extent possible.
I like it. That sounds good.
So I'll pick up where we left off, still talking about money, strangely enough. So this is Karen Howe, and for Mark on the phone. We are looking for ways to enact progressive revenue options. You know better than anybody that we do live in a regressive state, and that we would love more tools to figure out how we could be more, frankly, equitable in the way that we helped, you know, manage our budgets. We just don't have much choice right now, and so we're looking for options, things that we could add to our tool belt, whether that's ways to do means testing or something along those lines. So we're asking for the legislature to revise our tax structures, to provide meaningful progressive revenue options for us. I don't think we're going to be the only city asking for this.
You are quite right. Every city that we have met with has asked for that same thing, and as well as many stakeholder groups. It's a, it's a long, long battle, and we sort of take little victories where we can. I don't, I'm not overly optimistic that anything grandiose will come out of a short session, but it's not going away.
No, thank you, and we'll just continue pressing on it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roisin O'Farrell, and I just wanted to bring your attention back to the revised arbitrary 1% property tax cap, as I'm sure you're all very aware. Property tax makes up approximately 60% of our city's revenues, but this revenue source is only, can only grow 1% a year, as you know. At the same time, our expenses are probably growing at about 4% annually. So we would support revisiting the 1% property tax cap so that it attracts inflation, maybe a new cap that would not exceed 3%. This would help keep, help our city keep pace with rapidly increasing costs, providing essential services, and ensuring our financial stability. So we would really appreciate you taking another look at that, and that Sammamish is in support of this issue coming back up for discussion. So thank you for your attention tonight.
And thank you for that. I'll just add, Senator Peterson in the Senate has sponsored that bill. I have signed on as a co-sponsor, and I think we do have to make sure that our cities do have options in order to make sure they can fund the very critical services that all of our constituents need and want. So happy to help.
The 1% cap issue is an even bigger issue for counties than it is for cities. So there's pressure from all corners.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, and sticking with the money theme, as you are all aware, local jurisdictions, we are really key partners in helping Washington achieve its commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 95% by 2050. I love the slogan, right? Think globally, act locally. And so it really, this is where the proverbial rubber meets the road. To that end, we are asking for the legislature to, to help us with funding, right, for the Climate Commitment Act, to be able to implement projects that would support carbon reduction and climate resiliency. And again, this is a great intersection of climate projects, as well as, as Representative Springer talks about, you know, some of the risks that we need to try to become more resilient to avoid, things like fires. We recently developed and approved our Climate Action Plan that includes many new initiatives, such as electrification of our city's fleet and facilities, and creating other opportunities for our residents as well. And we want to be a good partner, and we really want to help achieve that, but we can't go it alone, as we just talked about with our revenue restrictions. If we're going to do this and do it collectively, we do need help, and we all do need to do our part, or we're not going to hit it as a state. So hopefully, we can get some great partnership and some funding there. Thank you.
One of the complicating factors that we should all be aware of, I don't think we have an answer yet, but the Climate Commitment Act will be back in front of the legislature as it was expected to be. Anything that big, far-reaching, and complicated always needs a little tinkering when you come back after having passed it. We're ready to do that. The complicating factor may be the constitutionality of playing with that act now, since it looks like it will qualify as a ballot issue. It's just unclear what the legislature's ability will be to make changes if, in fact, it qualifies for the ballot as is. So it's a question we have not faced before. No one's ever been in this position before, so I just urge caution here and patience while we try to figure out what's the art of the doable here.
That's good information to know. I'm wondering, though, also, is there, are there opportunities to still be able to get money to the cities from the federal government? Because I know there is a lot of infrastructure and grant money that's coming down, so to the extent that we can maybe, you know, sort of bifurcate those two things and still allow us to make progress, as you are all aware, there is an urgency for us to be able to make some very early progress. While there might be those other complications, we could still, still use some help and get started. So any ideas you may have, please let us know. We'd be happy to support you on those.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. The next, next item is that we are looking for support on the RAP Act. That is the Washington Recycling and Packaging Act. For those, as you know, it did not pass last year, and we're hoping that it will. Specifically, for those people that aren't in the, that are in the room that's not aware of what the RAP Act is, it establishes extended producer responsibility, which basically means that the companies that make the packaging be responsible for assisting municipalities with the cost of disposal and recycling of solid waste. Currently, the residents, we pay for the disposal. Sammamish recently extended our solid waste contract with Republic Services, which includes a 15% increase in rate increase, and in the years to come, it will obviously only continue to go up. EPR is successful in the five states that it is currently implemented in. And not only will it help reduce costs for our residents, but it will also contribute to reducing in landfill. Our landfill, our waste goes to Cedar Hills landfill, which is expected to close in 2040. I'm going to use the example of Starbucks as an example, that they produce 4 billion cups per year. That's how many they use, and only 1.2% of those cups in 2022 were in reusable or reusable vessels. So that's a lot of cups going into landfill. Those cups can't be recycled because there is a plastic. So there's multiple ways that the RAP Act would benefit our cities.
And that's Senator Wellman?
Yes, thank you. I wondered, a lot of the discussion on the RAP Act last session revolved around what Oregon had done, what Portland had done with the RAP Act. And with that, it was a question of a program which would allow the, perhaps a 10% per bottle charge that would then be repaid through a very elaborate process of returning those bottles to a place and maintaining a card, et cetera. And I wondered, you didn't mention that, I wondered about that. One of the things we have heard from some of the recyclers is that they changed their business model to enable them to recycle glass, which is, according to them, one of the most recyclable elements we have. Most people, I think, has been proven, really don't understand how to recycle, because most of the paper products that are produced have been tainted by either food waste or being wet in some capacity, which would then, you know, make an entire bin of paper unrecyclable. So we have, you know, been involved in this. It's challenging for me to see where all of this, all of this has been together in one bill, which deals with so many different things. So I'd like to hear more about your feelings about, you know, the recycling process that you're using, and whether or not, how you see the recycling of the glass playing out in your community specifically.
I do believe that the bottle bill this time will be separate from the RAP Act. I believe that was a challenge in why it did not pass last go-around.
And can you speak to your support or not of the bottle bill?
I do support the bottle bill. I mean, it has been, it's successful in all the, in the cities that do have returns on bottles. It would encourage people to recycle, obviously. It would encourage companies to, to do more in terms of how much they're producing. And, you know, the bottles, and bottles, glass bottles and aluminum cans, they're the ones that have the highest percentage in recyclability. So I do believe that having that bill would encourage recycling, people disposing of their bottles properly, and then, and that deposit amount would allow the companies to have the revenue to, to do the recycling.
If I may continue, one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. It was brought to my attention that the way that companies like Republic make money is because they are able to recycle the glass, and that is a profit center for them, and without that, they have pushed back and indicated to me that they would have to raise their prices. Is that under consideration by your counsel?
I believe Counselmember Stewart wanted to follow up on that.
If I understand, part of the, the benefit of the RAP Act is by creating more of that market so that companies like Republic can continue to make money. So it's really about creating producers that are creating more recyclable goods, because their things are recyclable and they can be made out of recyclable materials, you create that secondary market. By having a secondary market, companies like Republic can then have other materials, not just glass, that they can make money on. So I do see it as a long-term solution. It is a little bit complicated, but we really do have to get on a path where we make recycling, you know, a market and a business unto itself. And it is true, right now, it is so complicated because there are so many things that aren't recyclable, and there's so much that we collect and then can't recycle. That increases the cost and decreases the, the ability of recycling companies to make money. So that's where my support would be, is by creating that secondary market, requiring, part of that, right, was requiring companies to use more and more recyclable materials in addition to the things that they produce to be recyclable.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Counselmember Gupta. Hi, Councilmember Gupta, thanks for being here. The city of Sammamish also supports, and we have a few bullet points here, we'll maybe tackle them one by one. Affordable housing, funding for affordable housing. Sammamish supports new and flexible funding options for local jurisdictions that address the need for affordable housing, such as a local option real estate excise tax. Such options should be progressively structured to best meet the needs of low and moderate income households. And in addition, affordable housing near fixed route transit. Affordable housing should be required in planning, future planning for growth near fixed route transit. Sammamish supports setting affordability goals for transit-oriented development and providing local flexibility and planning resources to help communities achieve those goals.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mayor, I think that gets us all the way through our, the city's priorities. Were there any other questions from the delegation about those priorities before we move on to hearing from all of you? Senator Wellman?
Well, as you may remember, PFAS has been a major issue, and you haven't mentioned it. I wondered what the status was, please.
Yeah, we do have a couple of people that said on EFER, but I think that's always there. PFAS.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know Councilmember O'Farrell and I met recently, probably a month ago, with one of our water districts as well. And I know, yeah, it's probably always top of mind, always in support, but Councilmember, have you had more?
Hundred percent, hundred percent. We, as you may know, Eastside Fire and Rescue is in the predicament of trying to do some experiments to see if they're able to mitigate for the foam with PFAS. But as you saw in the paper, that even like this morning, the different wells from military sites, for example. So this is, you know, what I'm, what I'm interested in is trying to push this to just, not just the state level, a federal level, because it's that big a problem. It's that big. And addressing it now would be better than kicking this can down the road, because it, frankly, it's going to circle back, and you're going to hear it over and over again from every community, "My well, my water." And people are going to, you know, freak out. So this is something that I just can't get high enough visibility at the federal level to get some kind of resources backing it. That's my-
Well, I can speak, I can speak from this capital budget perspective, where we partnered with Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer this past year, where we paid seven and a half million to help mitigate, I think, their attempts to clean the PFAS out of the well to serve Sammamish. And then on top of that, the Senate budget is going to have Eastside Fire and Rescue, it starts with two million a year, and we're committing to do that for 10 years. It's going to be in a statewide pilot project right here of how you can mitigate PFAS as it's leaked into your local water system. So I'm optimistic, like, I think the best things happening in the state around PFAS mitigation are actually happening right here in Sammamish and Esq.
If I may, my understanding so far, unless somebody has some new news for me, mitigation is not possible. You have to filter it out. There's nothing that you can put in that takes it away. My understanding, that's where the costs are coming in. It all has to be filtered.
Yeah, I don't believe it takes it away. I think it creates a barrier so it doesn't make it, doesn't get worse, in terms of the experiment that's in pilot right now.
Yeah, I think you're just trying to get the parts per million down to the point where they feel it is not going to be bad for human consumption, I guess.
We waited for Ecology to give us a number. I think that that was one of the issues as well. And I don't know that we can keep, I guess, if we can have filtering as the water comes into whatever repository, that might be something. But a lot of what I've been talking with the Water Department about has been filtering the water that they, as it goes out, making sure that it does, as it passes on, it is, has been filtered. So whatever it is, we've put a lot of attention to it. I do think you brought the problem to the legislature, and I do believe that the legislature has been very responsive, as has your water district.
Yeah, I just want to add too, that, you know, while we are working very closely with EFER, and I think you'll see that in their priorities, there's another component to it as well, which is the prevention. We are seeing in Sammamish PFAS not related to the fire retardant foam. And so there are these forever chemicals that are out there, and again, that's going to be a solution that we need at a minimum at the state level, so that these chemicals aren't getting into the groundwater to begin with. That's probably not something that's going to happen this legislative session, but I think it needs to be on our radar and it needs to happen sooner rather than later as well.
And Councilmember Stewart, just to respond to that a bit, we know that things like the paper that is for popcorn, you know, the popcorn containers where you use it in your microwave, as well as many kind of paper plates and things like that, is one area. So yes, I do think ultimately, this is a federal issue, where we need the federal government to step up and prohibit those types of uses, which in many respects, you know, were created deliberately to, you know, make things that were heated up function more smoothly. And even some of the things, as I understand it, were, when we decided that children's nightwear had to be fireproof, we wound up making it fireproof, but it had other chemicals in it that were very dangerous. So this is an ongoing battle with the chemical industry in terms of, you know, making sure that things are tested before they're put into use in many respects, in terms of what the unintended consequences of these products are.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And there may even be-
For what you're doing.
Oh, yeah. And there may be some overlap, right, with the RAP Act? Because, again, some of those paper products that may contain those chemicals may also be paper products that are not recyclable. So again, if we go back to some of these things, I think they're somewhat interrelated, and we can hopefully get away from that. But thank you for your attention to this.
All right, Council, so I'm going to go through everyone as on my screen. If our representatives and senators would like to give us an update and on their priorities. So I'm going to start with you all for Representative Sen.
Hello, everyone. One of Representative Sen's leading priorities for this upcoming session is a bill that she introduced last session, HB 1368, which is her zero emission school bus bill. This bill is designed to support school districts all around the state to be able to get zero emission school buses when the school district is purchasing new school buses, so over time, being able to create a fleet of zero emission school buses and provide sort of resources so the school districts can have the infrastructure to charge those school buses. That's a bill, this is a bill, excuse me, that she has been working on throughout the interim, introduced last session, and worked through the interim previously. So that's one of her priorities. And then another one of her priorities for this upcoming session is to support children and special needs in schools and also through ESIT's Early Support for Infants and Toddlers Program. If you, I would explain more about that, but I'd actually defer to Nick, who is probably a little bit more knowledgeable about ESIT than I am. But those are some of her priorities that she asked me to share with you all tonight.
Great, thank you so much. Let's-
And I apologize, this is Senator, this is Mark. I have to hop off, but I just, I think I just really wanted to be on to hear your guys' requests, and I appreciate it. And I'll follow up with Nick and Luke on the Endeavor request to make sure we figure out the best path, highest probability. But I apologize, I have to sign off. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Senator Dingra?
Thank you. I realized that when I did my introduction, I actually talked about my priority bills for this session. So I will just end up saying that I really do appreciate your engagement during the session. Please note that you can always email me, call me at any point in time. The process in our office is we actually, before my morning starts, I actually go through all the emails I've received on a particular topic or a bill, so that I'm up to date on any changes or comments that people have on bills. And I know things tend to be very fast-moving, and even at those times, the best way to get ahold of me is actually through email, because we always have a find function that we do for bills that are, that are coming up. So I just want to thank you all for all your engagement. I look forward to seeing you down in Olympia, and I'm sure you'll be getting a copy of all my bills once they're dropped. A few of them already have been dropped. I will say, for those of your constituents who are part of the Lake Washington School District, I sponsor bills that have been brought to me by students in my district every year. From last session, we have still alive the gender-based pricing bill. This is banning the pink cats. They love it when their city council members come and testify on behalf of their bills. And the other bill that I will be doing is also one that came to me by teens on mandating bleat kits in our schools. And so I just wanted to plug that for you, because I just love encouraging our children, and I want to thank Chair Wellman for always giving the bills a hearing. And it's just an amazing experience for them. So thank you all so much.
Great, thank you. That's very cool. Representative Springer, we'd like to hear from you and your dog.
Yeah, he hears voices and thinks he needs to be part of the conversation, so. So I am on the Finance Committee and the Appropriations Committee, and between those two, in a short session, the vast majority of my time is really sucked up by budget work as we try and tinker with the budget. The Finance Committee, I think, is going to likely have a couple of thorny issues to deal with, one of which I already mentioned, and that's the possible initiative qualification of the CCA, the Climate Commitment Act. But one of the other bills that may very well make the ballot is the capital gains tax, the repeal of the capital gains tax. So we need to be making contingency plans in the event that they do qualify. So, you know, the finance and appropriations work is tedious and not very sexy, but usually sucks the air out of the room. And so I think that's where I will spend a majority of my time. I will mention again, there will be a couple of follow-up sort of trailer bills, we call them, ones, bills that follow other bills to kind of perfect parts of them. And I'll have, may very well have one, again, around wildfire. We're trying to set up some grant programs to allow at-risk communities, disadvantaged communities to improve ventilation and filtration in their homes when we have smoke events. We can't control where the smoke goes, but we can help alert people that it's coming and give them some of the tools they need to stay as healthy as they can. I will share one success story. The, people have talked to me a number of times, and they say, gee, this last summer, you really kind of, there wasn't much fire going on. We just didn't have a lot. We really dodged the bullet, which offends me, because we didn't dodge a bullet, we were just better prepared. The, and I'll give you a couple of numbers, and I didn't realize this till I met with the Commissioner of Public Lands. We had more wildfire outbreaks this past year in Washington than we ever have in history. We had 1,856 wildfires break out statewide in 2023. Ninety-five percent of those were out within 10 acres, and that's why you didn't hear about them. And we did that by getting smart about leasing more equipment, hiring 40 fire, 40 additional firefighters, and pre-positioning equipment in strategic locations around the state so that they could get on those fires quickly. So we are making progress. The really long-range issue there is forest health, and that's going to be a 20-year battle. So I will, I will find myself probably pretty much immersed in that as well. So thanks for the time tonight. Appreciate you listening to us and hearing from you.
Great, thank you. And thank you for your work on wildfire. I was intimately involved in all of that with my eight years at DNR, so I really appreciate your work, because, yeah, mitigation is needed in the entire state, like you mentioned. Senator Wellman?
Thank you. Well, as Chair of Education, which is about half of our state's budget and our paramount duty, I feel very honored to be in this position, but it is a really full-time job, and I'm only glad that I'm able to do it on a full-time basis. We will have, as has been asked, for a transportation bill for schools, for education. The STARS formula has not worked very well. People have complained about it for quite some time. And so this, this hopefully will be addressing transportation, not only the transportation in general, but also transportation to and from skill centers, as well as transportation for your special populations, which are foster kids who are coming back to their home district from another district, perhaps. Our special education kids who can't ride the school bus, they're too fragile, and also the homeless kids who may be in a different place every evening. And so those populations will be covered as well. I think that it's a very comprehensive bill. One of the other things that I think is also to the, one of the things that I say is my constituents are 1.5 million kids, which is every, every young person in our education system from birth through graduation. And it is our responsibility, I believe, to make sure that they're prepared for the economy that they will be moving into, and it's a digital economy. Six states or eight states have already made computer science a graduation requirement. We did put computer science as a requirement to be available to young people, and as a result, we've had about 30% of an uptake, but it has been mostly boys. And when I was computer, when I was programming on mainframes, half of us were women. And I think that this is a great opportunity to make sure that we get young girls into the pipeline for future jobs, because the jobs of the future, whether it's, I've been talking maritime, aerospace, some of the major industries of our state, really do require that digital knowledge and literacy and feeling comfortable with technology. So of course, it's a four-year-out bill, but I think it's going to be a creative bill that really realizes that many students who are in kindergarten and first grade today will have what they need by the time they're in fourth or fifth or sixth grade, and they can show their competency and not have to necessarily take a course to graduate. But I think that this is really important. And we're doing, just FYI, I think that there will be some work done in energy, environment, and technology on AI, both in the workplace and in applications and how it is being used, as well as looking perhaps at what Europe just did, which was to extend an EU bill, whatever they call it, across the entire European Union, requiring certain privacies and other things. One way or another, there will be issues around AI that will be addressed. I think that this is especially important for us to keep an eye on, because we see, I've experienced, as I've shared with others, in the course of my career in technology, I've experienced changes, like postscript, which did the typesetting for you and wiped out the typesetting industry in the United States in two years. It was gone completely. And so that's the kind of thing we want to look at. We want to look at re-skilling people whose jobs may be addressed, may be impacted, you know, by it as well. I'm looking at the BEAD money. We've been working all year on that, because the, our submission has to be, has already been, you know, put together and put into the federal government. We're due over a billion dollars of BEAD money. One of the things that I've been pushing for, because in our more rural areas, as you may know, because there's quite a bit of rural areas in your districts, we wind up with kids who don't have broadband in the home. And so, you know, they wind up using hotspots or sometimes even sitting in cars during their homework. And we want to make sure that we get the BEAD money out. So my request has been that we define projects on the basis, not of a cluster of businesses, but on a school district, because I want to make sure that we get our broadband, high-speed broadband out to homes. And one other thing I think that Representative Springer attended to and talked about his interest in, I am interested as well, that relates to our climate change and insurance. This has been a major area where we have- Um, this has been a major area where we have some areas of the state where companies have withdrawn their um their products in terms of fire insurance, making it, you know, not available. And in some cases, either it is not available at all, or in some cases, it's so expensive that some families are choosing to roll the dice and just, you know, decide that they um will either do the minimum or or go without it and self-insure, hoping that they'll have enough money. Um, I've been talking with a number of of people. We already have a program i- in the Washington State, so we've kind of gotten into this business in a back, in the backend, having a program, uh, an insurance program run by the state, which covers the removal of um oil tanks in family in homes. And that program has really been a small program. It was very successful. And I've been talking with them, using the knowledge that they have of looking at, should we consider um actually self-fi- self-insuring uh certain certain kinds of things for the state in order to keep our state healthy, as we no doubt will be facing other things, uh whether it's flooding or fire or whatever that climate change will bring us. And so, you know, kind of, we're looking to see, um, there's no bill about that right now, but I think that this is something that we've got to keep our eyes on. And um I I think at some point, the federal government will just be overwhelmed uh with what comes down the pike. And so I want to make sure that Washington State residents are have coverages as they need them, if we can possibly help in that area. So Representative Springer, I'd be happy to talk with you about this. It sounds like we could uh, you know, whip something together and uh we should be working together on it.
Yeah, yeah, we should. It is um, it is a sleeping giant that I don't think anybody realizes, so.
And and it's one of those areas I've spoken to, I'm being very candid here, but it's kind of interesting. I've spoken to um the two entities that have the best um, the best climate scientists in the world. One is our um Armed Services and the other is uh the insurance industry. Uh, they've already, the insurance industry has already pulled back from shoreline and ocean properties and doing all kinds of things, you know, around the country, depending upon, you know, where where they are. Uh, certainly Florida, Miami Beach has seen, has seen things like that. They don't want to talk about what their client, their climate scientists have said because it's proprietary information and it's competitive and what have you. And the military, as I've asked, say, we we agree with you on everything you've said, but it's political and we don't want to get involved. So um, we're really not getting that information that exists, which is unfortunate. But just from our own experiences, I think we can project a lot of what's happening continues to happen and that we have to be prepared to address. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Um, Nick and Luke, did you have anything last to add? Alrighty. Well, thank you all again.
Just our gratitude to the members of the delegation for being here and making time this evening for that. I know you you guys have busy schedules.
Much appreciated. Busy, busy time of year.
Yeah, definitely.
Busy in a month.
Yeah, and I know Representative Callan did email that um she's out sick, so we did miss her, but um, yeah, thank you to everyone and for sharing your priorities and for listening to ours. We look forward to seeing you all next year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, do we have fish here? Awesome. Um, are, do you guys have something to set up? Oh, you did? Alrighty, can we take a five-minute break? Is that all right? Okay, yeah, let's do uh seven fifty-seven. We'll be right back, and then you can get that queued up. Thank you. All right, Council, welcome back. Alrighty, oh, my jacket is in the way. All right, so am I passing it off to, okay? Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Jack Bates. I am the Education Coordinator for Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, and I'll be the one presenting this information to you tonight. Uh, but we also have one of our board members and the Executive Director. Uh, so I have visited classrooms in the greater Seattle area, many of which have been in Sammamish. So I'll be talking to you guys about some of the general salmon data, how the salmon themselves are doing, the different events that we have hosted at the hatchery, uh some interns that we have had, most of which who are from the Sammamish area, and then talking about the sponsorship. You guys help with the hatchery. So, this year, we had a historic run for both the Coho and Chinook salmon. Um, Sockeye had dropped off a little bit, but as you can see, we had um tens of thousands more fish than we have in previous years. So, something that the hatcheries are doing, they're doing correct. We host uh Salmon on Sunset as an event for the local community, not just Issaquah, but Sammamish in the surrounding area. We had about four thousand people in attendance. Uh, we had some rubber duck races, live music, food, many different things for the community to get some involvement with the hatchery. We um also are a part of the larger event Salmon Days, much of the same, having different activities at the hatchery, including some arts education, giving people a reason to see what they have in their backyard. So our Gibson Eck interns, something that I, as the Education Coordinator, was very involved with. Uh, we have them leading the educational tours for elementary school students, so other students from the Sammamish area were coming to learn about the hatchery, what we do to raise salmon, and more about the salmon lifecycle. They had a collective hundred and eighty hours of work between the five of them over the few weeks that they have been there. Um, they were there every Tuesday and Thursday, helping us out with various projects. The picture that you see here is them doing something known as egg picking, where we have um fertilized the eggs, but not every single individual egg gets fertilized. So we have to go through and pull out those that are not to make sure that they do not get molded and harm the other eggs. And I think I mentioned this on my next slide, but three of our five interns live in Sammamish. Um, although they go to school at Gibson Eck in Issaquah, they are residents in the city of Sammamish. So funding from the city has allowed us to lead more than five hundred elementary school students around the hatchery. We have had, or I guess I have visited more than six of the elementary schools in Sammamish and more than twelve classrooms within those schools during the presentations. Um, and one science fair, where I got to dissect a salmon and show kids more about the anatomy of the fish. And like I had mentioned again, uh, three of our five interns were from Sammamish. We have many volunteers as well who are from the Sammamish area. We do truly try to serve the entire community. Uh, of course, you probably know this, but salmon are a migratory species. They go through the entire Pacific Northwest. And so there are many people that have an appreciation and want to get some hands-on involvement with the salmon. We are providing them an opportunity to do so, whether that's wanting to learn more, get engaged themselves, or simply see some fish as they are making their migration back. Uh, thank you for your support. The city of Sammamish is one of our sponsors that allows us to provide this engagement with the community, and we hope that we can continue that in the future. And if any of you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Awesome. Thank you, Jack. I think we need a council tour, maybe.
Oh, absolutely, of course. We'd love to have you there.
All right, Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember Howe?
Hi, I was looking at your statistics, and the the count for uh Chinook looks terrific, but not as terrific for Sockeye. Did you have a idea why?
Uh, we do not know exactly why those numbers are different. Um, of course, being a migratory species, they're dealing with quite a few things across their journey, whether that is human involvement, predation in different areas of invasive species, um increased temperatures. There's a lot that the salmon deal with. Um, Sockeye is not one of the species that we raise at the hatchery. We wait, uh, we raise the Chinook, Coho, and Kokoni salmon, as well as rainbow trout, which get planted into Beaver Lake. Yeah, so we don't have as much data on the Sockeye. We're not as involved at the Issaquah Hatchery with them, so I'm sure somebody out there has some kind of a theory, um, but I personally wouldn't be able to give you any specific information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Oh, of course.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Um, that's really cool what the Gibson Eck students get to learn. Um, what are some of the future plans that the hatchery has?
Yeah, so we are wanting to do story walks, uh where we have children's books and other kind of things on display at the hatchery. Again, as a tool for them to kind of get engaged, learn more about the salmon, have a reason to get connected with the space that they have in their community. Uh, I want to start holding something, hosting something called Fish Talks, kind of similar to TED Talks, where different topic every week or month, and just kind of explain to people what to know about it, uh, and get involved with the community, have a conversation with them. Continue our educational programs like tours, in-classroom visits, science fairs, trying to get the interns more involved with those opportunities, so they can actually lead some of those programs themselves and get more leadership skills. Can't remember. I'm sure we have other projects. The hatchery is involved with a lot of other organizations, and so trying to be a part of events, again, like Salmon Days, Kokoni Education Day, working with Trout Unlimited and other groups, just to try to make sure that people know kind of what the salmon-friendly choice can be, how to get involved with those things, um, and what the new updates on the science is.
Thank you.
All right, Council, any other questions? Great. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for your work, and thank you all for coming. This is great. Yeah, we're happy to support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. We have the infamous Anjali coming up for the first reading of our twenty twenty-four Prose Plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. We are at the end of a year-long effort to update the city's parks recreation and open space plan, and we thank Council for your guidance and input at various stages of the process. Tonight, we are excited to bring for your consideration a final draft of the twenty twenty-four Prose Plan update. In the last couple of weeks, we have presented this final draft to the Parks and Recreation Commission and at a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and it was received very well by both groups. Included in your packets are written recommendations to City Council for adoption of the plan. We did want to mention that if City Council is comfortable, you do have the option to adopt the plan tonight at the end of the hearing. I am joined online by the city's consultant, Steve Do, Principal at Conservation Techniques, and Kevin Teague, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. In person with me is Janie Walzer, Management Analyst of our department, who has a short presentation for you.
Thank you, and good night, uh, good evening, Council. So tonight, we're going to review the changes that were made since the last time we spoke with you last month um and go over some of the edits that were made based on feedback. Uh, so we're going to start with a quick overview of the plan, just to ensure everyone remembers and is on the same page moving forward. Go over those edits and then talk about next steps. So the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is a strategic document, updated every six years, and our department uses it to guide maintenance and development of parkland, recreation events, trail connections, and more. And it also serves as a communication tool for City Council, other city departments, residents, and beyond about the status of Parks in Sammamish. The year-long effort to update the Prose Plan included a robust community engagement effort that resulted in feedback from over nine hundred participants. Opportunities for engagement included a community survey that was translated into four languages, four tabling events, two open houses, three stakeholder group discussions, several social media posts, three City Council meetings, three Planning Commission meetings, and six Parks and Recreation meetings. The community feedback gave our plan an updated direction that differed from what we heard in twenty eighteen. The last update focused on land acquisition, increased athletic field capacity, and improved wayfinding. The past six years, the city has acquired sixty-five acres of land for parks, completed an athletic field study, and started athletic field capital improvements, and also installed several wayfinding signs throughout the city with plans for more. This year, community feedback indicated a desire for a department to maintain the existing parks that we have, focus on developing new parks, on existing undeveloped parkland, and to increase the variety of recreation options in the city. So expanding on those themes, here are some examples of the sorts of projects that would fall into each category. Taking care of what we have looks like renovating existing parks and continuing the level of maintenance that we've established. When possible, increasing ADA compliance in alignment with our ADA transition plan and continuing to preserve our open spaces such as our preserves. Building up the park system on currently owned but undeveloped land that has been identified as future built environment recreation opportunities includes projects such as Beaten Hell. And then improvements to the Beaver Lake waterfront would also fall under that category, as well as installing permanent restrooms in place of portable restrooms in the parks. As a contract city, um, expanding recreation options would involve finding more third-party providers to partner with, but projects that are in scope for our department look like adding pickleball or community garden plots or other amenities to new parks, considering universal play equipment when upgrading or replacing existing playgrounds, and additional public art opportunities, which an upcoming art strategic plan will also aid with. Exhibit three in your agenda packets contains a complete list of the questions and comments that we we received, along with staff responses. Um, tonight, I'm just going to bring the top five most frequently suggested or critical edits that needed to be made. The first suggestion was received at the very beginning of the year, so it's been included in the plan since uh the go, get-go. Um, a summary page of accomplishments, the result of the twenty eighteen plan, has been included. It was also pointed out by um Deputy Mayor Lamb that our comprehensive plan and the Prose Plan had differing um population projections. So I reached out to staff and DCD, and now the population projection is the same, so our plans are in communication with each other. And we also added sources for that demographic information um at another place in the chapter, so it's easier to find. The order of the goals was changed to reflect the themes of the plan, when previously they weren't arranged based on any hierarchy. So now maintenance and sustainability is goal number three, climate resilience is four, trails is five, and then parks and open space are the new six and seven. And the last two edits that were made relate to the capital improvement plan that was presented. A question was asked if more money should be allocated to future trail connections. However, those trail connections projects are typically lower costs, so the allocation of five hundred thousand per biennial budget should cover those needed um projects. And lastly, there was confusion in the CIP over land acquisition funding. So a sentence was added to explain that the remaining four million unspent in the twenty twenty-three budget line will carry forward each year until it's exhausted. Um, and Anjali has additional information for that one.
We did have um a comment from the Planning Commission that even though this time around, we haven't heard so much about land acquisition as being a priority and more so to maintain what we have, we have to keep in mind that our population is continuing to grow, and so we will need more parkland to keep up our level of service. So one of the clarifications Janie just went over, which is there is about a little over four million that will be carried forward, will be proposed to be carried forward in the next uh budget cycle, as well as we have shown about five million in the seven-to-ten-year timeframe. And the six-year CIP included in this document is is a guideline. It is not a budget. And so um every biennial budget, we will be able to uh revisit the funds for land acquisition. If we've used a very conservative amount of REIT revenue, and we have shown a six-year CIP that balances revenue and expenditure. But if we end up with um more REIT revenue, um, we will have the ability to allocate additional funding for land acquisition in future years.
All right, um, and that was the quick presentation. So just next steps, you are able to adopt the plan tonight, if you so feel moved, and um you think the plan's ready for that step. If however, you'd like to give the community more opportunity for feedback, or you have some edits that you'd still like to see, we have a second public hearing that can be held um in January on the sixteenth. So I'll hand it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, so Council, let's go ahead and open up this hearing for the twenty twenty-four uh Prose Plan update. Uh, and then I think we'll have um, let's do, let's do public comment first, if that's all right, and then we'll move to Council questions and comments. Um, so do we have anyone in the room speaking to this item? No, the only three. Yeah, yeah. Um, all right, uh, I will go to online if we have any.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. Attendees joining by phone, please press star nine. Attendees joining by phone, please press star nine. And I will promote the first commenter to speak. Mr. Stickney, you are unmuted.
Hello, City Council, Paul Stickney, Sammish. To supplement the comment I sent in today, on page 12 of the Prose Plan, which was on page 155 of your 383-page packet today, there's a graphic that shows a 98% population increase in Sammish from 2000 to 2020, but the geographies do not align. So if you took the, you know, geographic boundary that is Sammish today, the population, instead of being 34,100, would have been 46,500 even back in 1999 and 2000. So I think that is a baseline to do population increase from. So I'm suggesting that that 98% get changed to 45% with an asterisk that states roughly one-half of that increase, of the 45% increase, was from King County growth enabled before 1999, which some refer to as the pipeline projects, roughly 3,500 housing units, and one-half by Sammish enabled since 1999. I think that would be genuine, authentic information for our residents to know just really how growth and people have occurred. So I don't argue that the total number isn't 67.5-ish, I just think that we should make those changes. Second thing I would call out is, there's a few places in the plan that talk about overdevelopment, but the term overdevelopment is not defined. I suggest that term get changed to misdevelopment for a couple of reasons. I sent along a handy graph that was in the fiscal sustainability document that showed the relativity of homes per square mile of Sammish, Bellevue, Isiqua, Kirkland, Mercer Island, and Redmond. We are 22% below the next highest level of houses per acre, which is Isiqua, and we're over 50% less than Kirkland. And lastly, I'd suggest that on the page, that is in my comment, but it's page 86 of the Prose Plan, page 229 of 383, we show the public an exciting statistic that the amount of parkland in the community has grown by over 1,500% since incorporation. And that's my comment for this evening, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other attendees online, please raise your hand if you'd like to give comment. No more public comment, back to Mayor Clark.
Great, thank you. All right, Council, I will open up for you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I love the Prose Plan, it's great. I would like to see staff take a look at the comments that we have gotten in before we go ahead and approve it, just to see. I thought some of Paul Stickney's comments were really well done, and we got some written comments in as well. So while I'm pretty comfortable overall with the plan, I do think some of those tweaks, I do think language like overdevelopment doesn't really belong in the Prose Plan, so I'd just like to see those things, but other than that, we're like so close. That would be just my opinion, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So last time, I spoke about connectivity and making sure that what we're doing really focuses on connectivity. So I was looking at the CIP, the capital improvement plan lists, and there isn't anything in there, other than in parks, the other portion, the actual projects that look like that they're being considered, none of them relate to inner connectivity. It's really like, there's Kohani Park, which is just within, but nothing that connects to, say, the Eastlake-Sammish Regional Trail. So when we look at like number 29, for instance, and you just talked about land acquisition, knowing that it's a priority for our community, I looked at the survey, it was either number one or number two on, for community priorities, was connectivity, either between the parks or to a regional trail like Eastlake-Sammish Trail. So I do think that having a project, one of the capital projects be a connectivity project is really important. And we spoke just now about land acquisition, and could the descriptor be changed to a placeholder to acquire land or for future parks or for trail connectivity or easements or right-of-way? Because I think all of those things can be part of land acquisition and not just for open space. So that would give us more dollars to do that, that would bring it to like $5 million to not just be for open space, just because I do believe that connectivity, it relates to our climate action plan, it gets people out of cars, and it would be a huge benefit to be able to have that, have that connection.
What page are you on? Sorry?
Oh, I am on page, gosh, 251.
251, awesome. Councilmember O'Farrell?
I just want to lend support to Deputy Mayor Lamb's comments and to Councilmember Stewart's comments, that I would agree with what they've just said, and particularly paying attention to the public comments that we've received, either via email or tonight, that we would pay attention and pop that into the plan. So I just wanted to lend support to the comments you've just received, so thank you. But otherwise, the plan looks great, and thanks you guys so much.
Councilmember Gupta?
Had a chance to be very involved with the Prose Plan through my involvement with the Parks Commission, very excited to see it coming to fruition. I did, I think I had made the comment about potentially allocating more funds to trail projects, understanding that they are typically not that expensive. In the 2018 Prose Plan, we saw in the community survey that land acquisition was a big priority, and now it seems like we sort of addressed that, which is excellent, because at the time, Council chose to allocate $13 million for that. If I remember correctly, the trails still, in the previous Prose Plan through the community survey, still ranked very high, there was, you know, 85, 90% of the community wanted more trail connections, and we see that again in the community survey. So it seems like we have not yet addressed that need. I would like to see us put more of a priority on that in some way, whether that is through the land acquisition funds or whether we allocate more dollars, either now or in two years, when we have a more clear picture of what the REIT money is going to look like. So I'd love to see that. I did also see, I think, page 42, they specifically call out bike racks, insight furnishings. I'm very excited. Thank you very much, I'm looking forward to those being installed, so very excited about the plan, thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, hi, Anjali, thank you, Mayor. Anjali, how often do we update the Prose Plan?
Once every six years.
Once every six years, and then is there any yearly review or two-year review of it?
We use it as our guiding document throughout the six years. However, the biennial budget is when you revisit your actual park CIP and update your projects.
Correct, okay. And then land acquisition, the $4 million, is that, that's for land acquisition?
Correct.
Okay. And so, yeah, we need to continue to, we're still a young city, and we're still growing, and we need, I think you said this, and I totally agree with you, is that we need to acquire more land, and would be my number-one priority still, because we are a young city. The other question I had for you, and I don't know if I'm in the right ballpark here, or if maybe this is a community development question, but is it possible for, with some of the requirements that are coming down from King County for our updated comprehensive plan, would it be in our, the city's interest or the Council's interest even to, to have wildlife corridors be a part of our parks plan? And I mainly see that as connectivity too, and the trails. I'm looking at a full-on kind of, hey, here's where, here's where the city of Sammish is, here's where we have open spaces, here's where there are already parks, there are streams, rivers, lakes, and so we have already some of this in place, it's just we don't have a full plan, but I'm just wondering if wildlife corridors that double as trails would benefit the city as a whole.
So I can speak a little to that, that our whole land acquisition strategy actually has a scoring sheet and prioritizes stream connectivity and trail corridors, which also in turn help wildlife corridors. So that's the extent that we have. Now, through the Prose Plan process, we haven't really heard a lot about it, we are at the tail end of the process. At this point, I might recommend that we work alongside the comprehensive plan process. I don't know of a way that, to introduce it at this stage into the Prose Plans explicitly. I look to our consultant or the city manager if you want to advise.
Yeah, thank you, Anjali, and Councilmember Trine, appreciate the question. I think to Anjali's point, we're at the very tail end of the Prose Plan, and trying to make sort of larger adjustments at this point in the plan is going to be, is going to be a little challenging, and we'll, would delay it if Council wanted to go that direction. However, to Anjali's point, I know part of the planning process around the comprehensive plan is these broader elements about trails and connectivity. And as you point out, I believe, Councilmember Trine, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, the trails that we do have identified and the open space that Anjali was referring to offer those opportunities now, and it would be the opportunity to build on those moving forward.
And Scott, I don't know if we, and Anjali, you might know this already, have we actually mapped that out? I mean, is that through GIS, do we have that in the GIS system already in the city, or is that? I know Mary Victor always is talking about mapping, mapping, and I appreciate that, because I, I'm a visual learner, I like maps too. So is it, has it been mapped?
I know that at one point, the King County map had some information. You know, we don't have a map as such, but you usually look at all your critical areas in the city and undeveloped lands and usually find patterns for your wildlife corridors. But we don't have a map that I can share.
And I was kind of thinking on, along that same line is the trails, right? That connectivity, so we're doing citywide planning, and I'm just looking at this thinking, this is the opportunity we have over the next year here to, because we're doing the update, is to have this in play. And so if it's not here at the pro plan, I'm okay with that, but I'm just looking at it as a whole, just saying, how does, how does parks, how can parks help? Maybe it helps community development to see this so that it actually gets on the plans, so that we have a, we have a plan going forward.
Right, and I do want to also add that the Prose Plan is not the end of, you know, we have one chapter on trail connectivity, and we acknowledge that, you know, we, our budget doesn't extend to the public right of way or to the critical areas right now. But this will be a working document and work in progress, so coming right behind this is your transportation master plan. And that is going to look at filling those gaps, bridging those gaps between our parks, and, and then we can work with community development through the critical areas update and look at connections through critical areas. And I will also look to Kevin if I've missed any other plans that we might be working alongside. Kevin, did you want to add to what I just covered?
If you all can hear me, the, the only thing that comes to mind is I know that there is an update to the critical areas ordinance coming in the next year, and potentially incorporating wildlife corridors as, or maybe language that allows pedestrian trails in wildlife corridors, maybe something that could be added to that during that update.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you. So yeah, I love the plan, I, I think we've had some really good comments as well, and I didn't know if, you know, it sounds like we have like three kind of top things, like Deputy Mayor Lamb, the mention of connectivity, and then from public comment from Paul, just adding that growth description and changing the word overdevelopment, like is this, do you have enough direction that we could approve that with the three changes? Because I'm looking at all the public comment, there's not really anything else that I'm seeing that's different unless someone else sees something else. Like is it easier for you all to come back again? I guess what's the, because it sounds like we just have like three very small, like wordsmith, wordsmithing things.
Right. It's, Deputy.
I would appreciate it if one of the capital plans could address connectivity, so...
I actually wanted to speak to some of the comments made tonight.
Awesome.
So with respect to connectivity, we do identify one of the long-desired connections between the Sammish Commons and Big Rock Park. So that is identified as a capital project in the document. And it's really small for me, but it's number 33 of your, of the CIP, on page two, under other park projects. So that is identified as a priority. We are currently working on a connection from the Williams Gas Line to Evans Creek Preserve, so that is not listed because we took it out of the trail connections budget. And I don't know if it's going to be easy to identify another connection without working with our partners in Public Works and working through the transportation master plan to see what rises to the top. So if, again, we are more than happy to make some of these comments after tonight, I just wanted to point out that that is identified as a project. As for some of the public comment received tonight, I did want to draw your attention to page 50 to 55 of the document. There are several travel shed maps that might have been missed by one of the comments, and I will close the loop with the commenter, but we have actually more sophisticated travel shed maps. In the past, you could just take a park and draw a circle around it, but that circle didn't mean much, because you may not have a road or a trail to walk. So the travel shed maps these days actually find roads and trails and draw polygons around parks to see really how, what is a half a mile travel shed for a park. And so we do have many of those maps. As far as connectivity, again, the Parks chapter is one effort, and then we do have to work with the transportation master plan with Public Works and other groups to accomplish more. So I just want to make sure if we are making changes, we don't come back and you feel like, you know, we didn't hear you. And then as for the comments related to the population growth, we can easily swap out the word overdevelopment, I would look for guidance, I'm not sure misdevelopment is the word we would use, we probably might identify it as increased development. And all that we are looking at in parks is, are we meeting the level of service? And so, you know, do we have enough acreage of parks for the population? And sometimes numbers like, we started at 44 acres and we are at 675, you know, it sounds like a cool statement, but really what it is, is that two parks were transferred to us by King County when we first incorporated, but there were a few other parks that got incorporated soon after. So I wouldn't emphasize a 1,500% increase, you know, beyond that, it's just, it's a lot of numbers in the document, but really what we try and use for all practical purposes is to make sure we are keeping up the level of service. the level of service. So yeah, I, I will say that the increased development is an easy swap. And if there's any other specific comments, I'd, you know, love to jot those down so we are comprehensive.
Jeez. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Sorry. The only thing I didn't see was we tend not to call out the annexation of Klahani as another reason why our population, I think we, when that happened, our population increased by 10,000, which is a significant increase. And we don't kind of reference that. And it's not, it's not a huge thing, but just in terms of anyone who's lived here for less than five years, if they were reading this document, just to understand the history and how, because we did have a colossal population jump in that time period, but part of that was the annexation of Klahani, which was a significant increase to our population. So I think that's worth calling that, even if it's in a footnote. And I didn't see it deliberately called that. I know that there's kind of a general footnote, but I think it was a significant population increase that it is worth at least in parentheses or somewhere to kind of note it. So yes, there were five or six annexations that contributed, Klahani being the biggest, but there were about four others. Page 11 of the document does it identify Klahani explicitly or it just says, so we can add that. We'd be happy to add that.
Councilmember Howe?
Thanks. I just, great work on the pros plan. Really love the document. I just have a question around process. So when you say you update the document, I'm not quite sure what drives it. For example, I made a comment earlier, which you noted about, I wanted to see something more about the Emerald Necklace. And it kind of speaks to that whole connectivity issue. And it, you're working with a consultant, it will be added, but I don't have a, I don't quite understand what drives that and how would I know that that happened?
How would you make sure that we actually help connect the dots? And that is a great question. I'm going to be very honest about that, response to that. So the Emerald Necklace is identified as a priority. What council has to acknowledge is it is outside the urban growth boundary that we are missing the most links. And so when we bring parcels for acquisition, you typically end up prioritizing what is in the urban growth boundary. And then that has been a challenge to make sure that we fill those missing links. Now council could guide us to fund projects that are outside the urban growth boundary. We were recently approached by King County to partner with them on a parcel that they applied for a grant for. And again, it being outside the urban growth boundary, and it was of course a very short turnaround. We could not have come to council and got input, but we did, I believe, provide a letter of support. So it is a vision that we know council would like to see. And if you would like us to prioritize acquisition outside the urban growth boundary, then we would have to take that direction and start proactively looking at some of those parcels with staff in King County.
Actually, I think you misinterpreted my question, but I'm glad you took it up that way. Because I don't know that we would ask to fund anything outside our specific area. It's more a case of doing precisely what you did, which is the letter of support and working with DNR and with King County and, and other organizations, other agencies, and being a participant, a strong participant, and giving us maybe the opportunity to get behind something if it needs more oomph. The, the question that I had though is just about process. So when there's, you say that there's updates that you make to this plan on a regular basis. I don't know what drives those updates. I don't know how I would know that you had done an update to the pros plan. And I was just using the Emerald Necklace as an example where you, you've hired a consultant who will be looking at it, but I don't know what that means as an outcome. Like by when would I see something? Would I ever? I just, I just don't have clarity on that.
Right. So it is, we are required to update this plan every six years.
That's a long time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because it was update, working document. I'm trying to get the, a clarity on working document. What does that mean?
If I may, Councilmember Howe, I think, and Anjali, check me here if I go astray, but working document more means that what is in there is not, is set in stone for that six-year period because it goes through this process, but that we pull elements out and work on them moving forward. And those elements, those components are things that, that we bring back to council. And what we wind up, whether we hire a consultant to do more analysis or whether we bring projects to council, that's sort of the, the implementation, if you will, of the working document. That is not designed to be so locked in stone that we can't be nimble, but it is the policy guideline that tells us where we should be spending our time and effort to make that distinction. And I know that's a little, it's not quite a punt, it's a half a punt, but, but, but it really gets at what is a broad policy planning document to guide us directionally versus what's more specific to try to address a specific issue or an opportunity or further analysis that we need to be able to bring you all informed decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, I'm glad you were able to find the page numbers for those maps because I had a memory that, of seeing those and I was not entirely sure if that was this go-around or last go-around. So very excited to see those. Just wanted to call out page 70 also has trail map, recreational trails in the city with walksheds to those trails. So that's, you know, a starting point for the connectivity. I don't think it's as comprehensive as we might like in terms of how do you get around, you know, in non-motorized capacity throughout the city, but I think that's a great starting point. It's important to note that that is in there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So council, I don't know what we're thinking as far as, you know, this being an overarching policy document. I think some of these, you know, the increased development, I think, sounds good. That added growth description with Klahani. I don't know if you had your question answered, Deputy Mayor Lamb, about the connectivity? Is that, because that sounds like something we would revisit and something we'd do a deeper dive, whereas this is like an overarching document? I'm just trying to gather and see if like, if this is something we just want to keep open, if we want to close and reopen, what we kind of want to do with this.
Councilmember Stewart?
As much as I would love to close on it tonight, we advertised that it would have a second public hearing in January, and I just do worry that we pull back on a promised area, but I'm not totally opposed to it. I just want to throw that out there as.
The public noticing that we sent out to the newspaper didn't indicate that there would be a second one. So it was just the as-needed indicated in the agenda bill is where it's been advertised.
All right, I'm going to make a motion, see if it happens. Well, first, I'm going to close this public hearing and I guess if we need to come back, we can always open another one in January. So I'm closing this public hearing. Sorry, there's some comments, some sidebar here.
Mayor, I just, I want to make sure before you close the hearing, I wasn't clear on whether council wanted to extend the hearing out or close it. That would be your first. Is it a second hearing or is it keeping the same one open? Oh, second hearing. I stand corrected, my apologies.
I just wanted to, yeah, because I think we normally, I guess we know we would have to leave it open for almost a month or something. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just have to come back and ask this question on connectivity again. I know I can bring it back again. And so what, like, what stage would this come back to have another discussion about what trails that we could actually put as a capital plan? I know that like Public Works, you know, if, if there's sidewalks, but what if there are no sidewalks? And it's like another, it's just a straight trail. Like where in the process can we talk about what those trails could be?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to let Kevin respond. The truth is that we, we are one city. We do have our, we definitely don't work in silos, but we cannot commit Public Works funds to what is outside of parks. So it, it is a partnership. And so we can only come back to you when the transportation master plan is also complete and some priorities are identified. We are communicating with them to, to share what priorities we have heard. One example is the 218th Street along Beaton Hill and at right angles to that Southeast 8th Street. So we know it's a priority, but we wouldn't be able to advance a capital project outside our park boundaries. If there are missing links that require easements through open areas and tracks in subdivisions, we could lead the way on that. So, so that's where I'm getting a little stuck. But Kevin, any thing you want to add to that?
Well, I would add that, and I hope this is in the right direction, but as I look at the CIP number 34, the future trail connections, what we know is that trails are a significant priority and, but we don't have, other than the projects that have been described, the connection of Lower Commons to Big Rock and Beaton Hill, that, that trail connection. And then the other one that Anjali mentioned, the pipeline trail down into Evans Creek Preserve. Those are two identified projects as we move forward. And also if you factor in things like the, we are, are moving forward with the acquisition of a property adjacent to the Parker property, which would get, connect Parker through Landa to the East Lake Samamish Parkway. And then we would begin to look at how we would connect to the East Samamish Trail. So we have these things that are in the works, but not a specific project identified at this point, but just knowing that it is a priority of the pros plan and a priority of council. Those are the types of projects we'll continue to pursue until we work out what the actual project is and, and then begin working on, on that. And then would come back to council just to make sure that we had council support on that. I don't know if that answers the question, but those are the things that come to my mind.
Yeah, it does. I guess I was just, yeah, this, this doesn't have to include like Public Works. I understand, you know, there's that separation. I do, and we've talked about this before, is that trail from, on 212 on Snake Hill Road, like that is strictly a, that would be a parks plan. And if there's any other ones, it would be just great to know. But, you know, I, I think I'm comfortable. Thanks.
No, that's really good to know that it'll come back after, well, next year sometime, obviously for these either, we just have to wait till Kevin names the projects that he can bring them to us, I guess. Yeah. No, I really appreciate that. So if you have, I, I will try to make this motion, we'll see what happens, if I can even explain what I'm going to do. So I would like to approve Resolution 2023 1032 with the two small amendments of adding the growth description and the overdevelopment to approve the 2024 pros plan.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. As far as speaking to this, I think we're at a really good spot and it's really good to know that these pieces and elements are going to keep continually coming back to us. I think this overarching policy document is really detailed and really good for people to take a look at. Like you were saying, people who moved here five years ago can probably read it and find some history, at least kind of some understanding. So what do anyone else like to speak to that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. Thank you all so much for your hard work. Really appreciate it. I think this is like, we've had a lot of interest, a lot of good comments. I think people are really excited about it. So thank you. Thank you, Kevin and Steve.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
All right, next up, Scott, do you have a city manager report?
I do, in the interest of time, this will, this will be brief. As this is our last meeting of 2023, I just want to say thank you to all the residents and interested parties for being involved in all of the major projects that we worked on this year collectively. Concluding with the pros plan, just wrapping up here. But we've done a tremendous amount of outreach this year and, and tried to get to our community in multiple ways and will continue to try to do that next year. But it takes a village to pass a plan, as it were. And so I want to say thank you to everyone who has taken the time to offer their comments and insight into our plans as we move forward. I'd also like to remind everyone that as we move into the holidays, City Hall is closed on the 25th of December and the 26th, and then the 29th and January 1st in concert with our union contract. So just a reminder, we are only open two days in between Christmas and New Year, where city services will be available, but otherwise we will be closed on those days. And just want to make sure everyone, and we will be posting this out on social media so that everybody knows. But otherwise, we are open and available. Our emergency crews are always on standby if by some chance we get weather that requires it. So rest assured that City Hall may not be open, but we will be providing services throughout. And with that, Mayor, I just want to wish everyone in the community a happy holidays for whatever holiday they choose to participate in. And I hope everyone has a restful and happy new year. I do want to thank so much Deputy Mayor. I put it in the email and then totally forgot. Before we get to that, Friday, this Friday is Frosty Fest. This year, we moved indoors to the Central Washington Building because last year we about got blown off the plaza and it was not warm. So we've decided to be frosty indoors. We invite the community to come on and join us. It should be a great event this Friday at the Central Washington Campus.
Awesome. Deputy Mayor Lamb, looks like you have a, you have a written report that you added?
Yep, I have a public issues committee meeting tomorrow. There are three items on the agenda. We'll be taking a look at the SCA legislative agenda. The SCA board will be considering the nominations for the King County Regional Board and committee appointments. There's a number of people here that have applied to committees and they'll probably appoint the people that have applied. There are several committee openings still that haven't been filled. So if there's anybody that still wants to apply, you have until January 31st. We will also be discussing the King County Climate Crisis Funding Proposal. King County is requesting the King County Executive develop proposals to generate $1 billion in funding over six to nine years to address climate change. So they're looking, some of the proposals include a property tax levy lid lift. So I did ask council via email to provide feedback and I did get feedback from Councilmember Gupta. So it would be greatly appreciated if I could get comment before my meeting tomorrow evening. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know, I attended an event last Saturday at Shoreline. I was invited by Councilmember Tracy Furutani, she's a council member from Lake Forest Park. They did a joint venture at Shoreline where they planted the first Maiwaki Urban Forest or Mini Forest. I believe it's the first one in King County. I had met Tracy at a K4C meeting and he invited me to it. It was really, really exciting. I promised to follow up with an email and I also promised that the email will mostly consist of photographs. I'm not going to ask you to read a whole lot and maybe a link to what Maiwaki Urban Forest really is. But they also had members of the Duamish and the Yacumminations there. It was a very moving kind of opening ceremony. The Shoreline Historical Society took the lead on the project and they got funding for many, many different places for this project. They're also going to put together kind of a template for how to get this project started in other jurisdictions. So I'm looking forward to seeing that because I would love that this would be a project maybe that we could do. It's the kind of thing that requires a very small amount of space, maybe the size of two to six parking spaces. You're not talking about a lot of space. Anyway, I will follow up in the email and kind of show you what, what a mini forest is. It has lots of climate benefits and CO2 sequestration benefits. I can't say that word for the life of me. I've tried to say that word, I cannot. I always, anyway, I'll keep drawing. Anyway, that's it. Just look for my email in the next coming days. Promise it's picture heavy, so you might even read it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that sounds good. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember O'Farrell. That's very interesting. Tomorrow night. night, I have the SCA, the Sound Cities Board elections. I forwarded that to you guys. If you have any questions or concerns about that, please let me know. And then on Thursday, we have an EFOR board meeting. I believe we, one of us forwarded that a while back, but I think the biggest thing is probably we'll be doing the evaluation for Chief Lane during that meeting. I don't think there's anything else. Double check. There's nothing else there, but please do take a look. And if you, again, have any questions, please reach out to Councilmember Howe or I.
And the feedback for Chief Lane's review, that was all done and good?
Yes.
Yeah.
We turned it in.
Awesome. Sounds good. All right, is there anything else from council? Would anyone like to make the motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn. Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thanks, everybody. See you literally next year.